Presentation about feral cat feeding prohibition ordinance. Diana Barrett with the Animal Services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This is our second time on this topic and the recommendation is to adopt the free feeding feral cat ordinance that was presented a few weeks ago. In addition to that, I'd like to give a little background on what a program called TNR or trap neuter release is. Just for clarification, we had sort of mentioned that a little bit in the last one. I just want to talk about what that is. Basically, the free feeding ordinance is the first step towards addressing the community cat issue that we're having in the Yuba City area. Not free feeding, meaning bulk feeding, just throwing food out, just to be clear on what that means exactly as well. If we do that as well as implement a trap neuter release program with the public's sanction, if it's, if you will, if they're interested in cats that might be on their property that they're feeding and managing, that's the difference between just throwing food out, then they would be coming towards the, coming to the Sutter Animal Services Authority for support for, with a program that we're currently designing. We're looking into grant possibilities. There's quite a bit of money out there through some charities and I won't name them off, but we're looking at the different resources. Basically, we recognize that the public needs help with the feral cat issue. And this isn't anything that you folks don't know, but in 2012, we stopped taking in feral cats at the facility. And simply not taking them and that, and then not offering another solution, isn't working. What's happening is the animal shelter, especially this time of year with the good weather, we're getting between five and 10 calls every week from the public that is just about to pull their hair out. They're really upset about what's going on. And they're upset because, not because they don't like cats, it's because they like their backyard that they can't use, or they're feeling that they can't use it. So we're looking into possibilities right now to make this a two-tiered system. So I gladly entertain any questions you have.
Right. Any questions of staff at this time? All right, I would like to open up the, this to the public hearing. There's a number of people that have filled out speaker cards. And we will start with Heather Chambers. Following Heather will be Jerry Walker. So if you could line up so we don't have a lot of time waiting for people in between. And then following that will be Brian Henry. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Heather Chambers, 275 Woodside Court, Yuba City, 95993. And the only background I have on this is from the Appeal Democrat article. Okay, and I'm not quite sure how this fits in, but I know that I personally have taken on 23 cats over 28 years and found a home for every single one of them. The last was a litter of four abandoned kittens, day old, and I bottled fed them until they were old enough to get homes. So what I read in the Appeal Democrat, sounds a little bit different than what you were saying. I know some of the problems we had were there weren't traps available to get them over to the SPCA for the low-cost neutering. And, you know, I depended heavily on a rescue group to help me find some of the homes for the cats and to help me with the cost on the spaying and neutering. So I'm concerned that just saying you can't feed, and that's what got out in the Appeal Democrat, how do you tell the difference between a lost cat and a feral cat? One of the, two of the cats we took in had been hit by a car. And when they're in pain, you can't tell. When you've trapped them, you have to feed them for the period of time before, you know, the stitches are removed or you can release them back out again. The ones we did, I helped my neighbor, we took care of 11 cats over a period of a couple of years and got them neutered so that there are no more cats that are able to bear kittens or father kittens. So I don't want to be on the wrong side of the law. And I think that some of the efforts need to be to help people who keep that problem away from other people and from government funding being required. Having the traps available so that you can go and get them, the vaccinations and get them neutered would be appreciated.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Jerry Walker.
Hi, I'm Jerry Walker. I live at 1166 North Gate Drive in Yuba City. I was a bit disappointed that I didn't hear about a previous meeting and that when I saw it in the Appeal Democrat, it was like that was Sunday's paper and you're going to make a decision tonight. So is, perhaps it was in there and I missed it? I don't know. Anyway, I, I'm certainly not an advocate of feeding without spaying and neutering. I've never done that and I don't advocate that at all. But I, and I'm okay with the ban as long as people like the lady who just spoke and myself are able to practice TNR methods. I think that that's important. I think it's more humane. And I hope that if the ordinance passes, that you will have clear and precise wording in there that will exempt those of us who are doing it, using TNR methods, that we will be exempt from breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian, you're up. And then following Brian will be Carla and then Jan.
Okay, my name's Brian Henry. I live at 833 Carnell Court here in Yuba City. And I have a business out on Burns Drive. And the reason that I came today was because two years ago, when we moved our business to town, we inherited one of these issues at our business. There was a large feral cat population there. And after the first several months, we realized that they were in the dumpsters and they were all over the place. And so we decided that we would begin to manage that colony that was there. And so the following spring, we wound up with like 30 kittens that were just everywhere, little kitties all over the place, wandering in our building. And so we did what we could. We, while they were still young, we captured those kittens and found homes for all of them. But then we began to feed the cats and we found that we could easily control where they were. And by taking away some of the stress of hunting for food all the time, they became much more mellow. And now the colony is very, very manageable. It's very easy for us to capture them, take them in for TNR, whatever it may be. And so when we saw this, I think there's been some confusion based on the article in the paper and the ordinance itself is a little bit confusing in that it cites a study that doesn't really support the idea of a food ban or a food ban for cats as the reason for having made some of the decisions going forward to stop doing euthanasia and some of those things, which all makes sense. So I guess the issue that I wanted to bring was that I wanted to make sure that if, there are a lot of people out there, I think that have the willingness to put forward an effort to manage these colonies. But because there's no cohesive group that's working together with the city to manage them, there's not really a resource available. So we, you know, work with other businesses close to us. We pay for those spay and neuters, but we don't get discounts. Right? So all of that stuff is not a cooperative effort. And so the concern was that a feeding ban may alienate some of the people that the city's going to need to actually effectively manage the populations in the area. Because you're going to have to rely upon the community to help or it's not going to happen. I mean, I think the example of that is, you know, all of the money that has gone into the shelters and now they're finding that those methods aren't very effective. You know, the, the science says that in order to decrease the population of a cat, a feral cat colony, you have to remove 50% of the population consistently or they will continue to outgrow the rate of euthanasia. And the counties in the state of California have never done better than 5%. And so when you look at those kinds of statistics, there's no way. And the only success stories that you see are the community-based type programs that effectively incorporate education, training, and the resources of the community to work with Animal Control to make that happen. So my main concern was that we, first off, I guess, offer that assistance. There's a lot of us, I think, out there that are willing to do that.
Need to wrap it up, Brian. You've exceeded your three minutes.
Oh, okay, that was my beep.
That was your beep.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have Carla.
It is a joy to be here because you are hearing what some of the concerns are. And we're, we're trying to do this as a group. When you enforce something on people, the law, it's the intent of the law that, that should be the guiding force in when you, when you punish people. And if, if, if the law is so written that you're punishing people who don't really deserve it, then you're creating more problems than, than you're solving. And so if I have any ability to affect your decision today, I would ask you not to make a decision today. It's, it's very true. I have, I heard of it because I read the paper today and I don't always read the paper. And there are many other people out there. Now, I'm going to tell you a situation in my life. I have a young daughter, or she's considerably younger because I adopted her and I adopted her at 53. And, and she had a cat. She has a sliding glass door in her bedroom that just came and sat on her lap and it became a pet. And we spent hundreds of dollars on it with the vet. That was maybe a feral cat, I suppose. We also, we got little birds, like at Easter time, little, little chickens. And we were going to raise them and we raised them in the house for a while. And then I set the cage out on a table and then she let the cage be down on the ground. And we came out one morning and body parts were all over the place. And she was just, oh, you know, this is so horrible. Well, a mother cat had had kittens in, in our hedge and she was trying to feed her babies. And that's a perfectly normal thing. And she was all upset about it, but she had this life experience and she learned to love the mother cat. My neighbor took the cat in, had the cat neutered, and then she had her babies. Well, I went out because I was raised on a farm. We are an agricultural community and, and I caught one of these little things running around. Okay, it bit me. It bit me in the finger. I had to go to the doctor, big deal. It became the best cat, it was of the neighbors. We've continued to feed mother cat under your ordinance as if you, if you were thinking it would be illegal for me to feed that cat. You know, she feeds it every single night. I put a box out there for it. You know, the, the babies come back and they're huge, great big things. They catch the rats and the mice around my area and they leave them as little presents for me. And I'm very grateful for that. And when you do something that's against the nature of, of the relationship between humans and animals, it's not quite right. You can make wonderful decisions for our community, but don't just use the guidelines of high-paid officials or high-paid authorities. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jan Kendall.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I spoke at the last meeting. I just, I wanted to reiterate that the Appeal Democrat is probably the reason why so many people are here. And, and having everybody on the same page, both the anti-cat and the pro-cat people need, I think, need to understand that it, by all appearances, this ordinance is going to still allow feeding, but in a managed, careful way, not the 30-pound open bag is, was the example last time. So I think that that's important to make sure that that is well-stated so that everybody understands and we don't make more work for the staff at Animal Control. Because as soon as this is passed and everybody's still under the misunderstanding that you can't feed cats, or is that what they're going to understand? And the idea is to actually to stop free feeding cats? Oh my goodness, you're going to get so many people calling saying, my neighbor's feeding their cat outside right now. Come and bust them. And I don't think that's quite what you guys have in mind. So making sure that the public is well-aware of, of what that definition is. And I can see why free feeding is a bad thing. When you're free feed, you're not only free feeding all the cats, but you're free feeding the opossums, the raccoons, and everybody else is coming to visit. So, so I certainly understand that, but I think it is important to make sure. And it looks like that there might be an opportunity for a lot of volunteers to help with the trap neuter release program. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jan. And anyone else would like to speak? Please. Take your cards up to the clerk.
My name is Peggy Peterson, 244 Fairman Street, Yuba City, 95991. We have a feral cat problem in our neighborhood and Animal Control has come out and told us not to feed and nobody's feeding anymore. But the cats are still healthy and they're all still there and they're all still howling at night because I know they're in heat. And I know that the seven kittens that have been born in our particular house around our property are now propagating. So my, my, what I would like to see is not an ordinance such as that, but some help. Because I can't, because of my physical limitations and time limitations, capture them and I can't pay for them to be neutered, but that's what I would like. I wouldn't mind having neutered, spayed, feral cats on my property as long as they're not going to be reproducing because, do the math, if they're not spayed and neutered, there's just going to be 30 or 40 of them by another year. And nobody in our neighborhood that I know of is now feeding them because we were told not to. I never did. It was the lady across the street that started it. But they, I think cats are sort of like salmon. They go back to the place they were born to have their kittens. Well, that's what's happening at my house, even though I don't feed them, they come back to the place where they were born and have more kittens. And I don't have, I just am not able to trap, neuter, and release them. If someone else could trap them for me, have them neutered and release them on my property, that's fine, but I can't do it myself. So I would like to see some kind of help along that area.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Thompson. I live at 1701 Harbertown Drive in Yuba City. I am not against people having pets. However, in my neighborhood, I've lived there for 24 years when it was being developed. And we've had two families that feed cats. We have one family now that feed cats. I can't let my grandchildren go out in the front yard, backyard. I am a custom car advocate. I come out of the house, cats are on top of my car. I have scratches. I go to car shows and I, I, we just don't know what to do. I've talked to my neighbors and I was hoping that more of them would be here today. Those of you that have acres of land and want to feed cats, I have no problem with that. I personally don't have any pets, but I would like to enjoy my neighborhood, my yard, the smell in the summertime. It's just, most of you guys know what it smells like. My grandkids, when we go down to Happy Park, they will not walk past that house. We go across the street, walk past, and then go to the corner, cross the street, and cross the street again, just to go to the park. While I'm sitting in our family room, watching TV, watching the news, cats are coming across the patio. I come, again, come out of the house, they're scattering. You watch them come across the street from the house, they come down, they go into all the other neighbors' yards, do their business. I have to clean it. I used to go and buy the stuff to put out to keep animals away. It got to be pretty expensive. Go check on the price. Thank you. I'd just like to see something done about people having too many cats. These cats are not house cats. They're kept outside. They feed them out of a plug cap on the car. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Daryl Hikens, 2040 Spring Court, Yuba City. Sorry for being late, I was feeding my feral cats. And have been doing so for about four years. They're not in a neighborhood, they are actually in more of a commercial area. And we are probably on our third or fourth generation, although the generation that is out there now will be the last one if they are left to themselves because all of them have been spayed or neutered or taken away. I myself have trapped six cats and had them neutered and have helped in doing that with three more this year. I think the free feeding thing is a little bit weird way to talk about it because I probably spend about $1,000 a year feeding and medicating these quote, "feral" cats. What I do see, and somebody else had mentioned it, is probably in the area I'm in anyway, half the cats there are dropped off. They weren't born there. They're cats that'll walk up to you the first day you see them. And since I'm out there every day feeding them, I know which ones come and go. And it's, it's not just a feral cat population problem, it's a abandoned animal population problem. And when we treat them all the same, it's not quite fair to the ones that used to have a household. I do think there are ways to do this. I don't think stopping feeding, public feeding, let's say, is the first step that should be taken. I think what the proposal talks about as far as trap, spay, and neuter, or neuter and release is a good start. And that's where we should start, not stopping the feeding as a, as a first item. And I ask that you take action on the trap neuter and release program tonight, but let's not get into stopping feeding by persons who care for these animals that have been abandoned.
Thank you. If you'd like to make some comments, please step to the podium.
My name is Harold Steininger. I live in the county or city. House next to me is city. I'm the next house, I'm county. My brother-in-law also lives in the city. Recently, he had a bunch of feral cats at his place and he was called by somebody from that department saying that they would come over if he would capture the cats. And he had a lot of them. And he was free feeding them. He just left a bag out for them. And he has a lot of property out there. And he trapped the cats, they had them fixed, brought them back, and he's fine with that. I'm fine with that. I, I don't, I, I have three dogs and I love cats, but I don't think that this ruling for not feeding cats at all is, is, is fair at all. You know, cats come over, you try to take care of them. Like, we have a couple of cats that are next-door neighbor cats and they come over, they drink water, and then they go home. And I don't know if they're feral cats or not. We have a neighbor that has a lot of cats, but I, I just don't believe in this ordinance. I mean, you know, trap and release is fine. People should be able to trap them and call the pound or whoever, have them come over and get them and get them fixed and then bring them back. I don't have any problem with that. But, but just quit feeding them, I'm against that. In other words, I heard some people say, well, they, they, they're alive, they find, they find food and whatever. Well, I don't, I don't believe that. And I, I'd hate to see any animal, cat or dog or anything, not be fed and starved to death. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Okay. Please, please step up to the podium then. Open the public hearing again. All right. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this, please step up in line. If not, we'll close the public hearing after this item for this speaker.
I almost didn't get up here because I was late, but I can't just sit there and not say anything. I am a cat lover. I'm very emotional behind this because when I read it in the paper that they wanted to ban us from feeding them, I, I couldn't believe that. These little animals need advocates that come and speak for them. They can't speak for themselves. I myself have been feeding. And I don't like the word "feral" because a lot of these cats have been abandoned. And when I saw where it said that they wanted to punish people by fining them, the people that should be fined is the ones that are abandoning these, these animals, not us that are trying to keep them alive and keep them healthy. So far, I have neutered, had the cats neutered, 11 of them so far. I will do two more this month coming, in March. I plan to do two more in April with the help of a friend that takes them down and gets them neutered for me. And I have fed them myself. I'm on a fixed income and I would go without food rather than not have food for these animals. They all know my car, they all are located in an area where they're safe, they're contained. And I just think that, you know, not to feed them would be terrible. And that's all I have to say. I will continue to take care of them. If some of us could get together maybe and work some kind of a, an alliance or something where we can all help each other on this, I think it would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Guess we have a couple more speakers. Go ahead and step up to the podium and then when you're finished, if you could fill out a speaker card for us also.
Hi, everybody. My name's Elizabeth Freidu and I am co-director of Rescue Paws. I live at, should I tell everybody where I live? No. 1179 Cecily Court in Yuba City. I, the reason why I came up here is because I feel like there's a lot of confusion with how this ordinance is worded and, and the people's understanding. What I'm hearing pretty much across the board is that the people that are cat lovers are spaying and neutering. So feed them, you're fine. The kindest thing to do is spay and neuter. And you guys seem to all pretty much be on board with that aspect of it. So no one's breaking the law as long as you guys are making a conscious effort to control the population. As far as Rescue Paws goes, in far as the way we see it, you know, the kindest thing we can do is to prevent animals from going to the shelter, prevent animals from, you know, having to, or ending up dumped somewhere because all it goes right back to is, is taking that extra step to spay and neuter. I mean, we wouldn't even really be having this problem if we had already, you know, if we had something in place to spay and neuter, which is what we're working on. So everyone here that's feeding cats but are also doing the extra step in spaying and neutering, you guys, we're all fine. We're, we're doing, taking the right steps for going forward. It's, it's progression, you know? And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. My name is Frank Bertone and I live at 1862 Kevin Drive. I also work with Rescue Paws and my wife does. I just have a short comment. Obviously, the feral cat problem in our area is not limited to our area. Yuba City isn't the only town or city with that problem. I would invite the council to put off a vote, if possible, on this ordinance. Let's investigate what other cities have done to address this problem. Investigate cities where they've successfully cut down on the feral cat population and maybe try and come up with a program that models what, what other successful cities have done. I've heard a lot of emotional talk and I'm very emotional about cats also. We've adopted many, we've saved many, we've trapped and neutered many, kept some, released some. But if we put the emotional side, take it out of, out of, look at it in the context of what works versus what we want to see have, you know, have happened. Take the emotional side out of it and let's go find out what has worked at other cities and maybe apply it to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, this will be the last one.
Hi, my name's Agina McCarthy and I'm from Bakersfield. We do have a TNR neuter release, trap neuter and release. I've done 26 and I still have 56, 57 that I have. And I still have fifty-six, fifty-seven that I have. Most of mine are drops. And yeah, you can tell the difference. We don't have an ordinance that you can't feed them. And that would obviously be a major mistake. It is the people that are dropping them. It's a problem more than it is the feeders. But the TNR is definitely the way it needs to be. The county is the one that is doing it. The city is not on board yet. They are trying to get the city on board. They allow each group or person to, to a day to bring in. And then each shelter allows a certain amount per day.
All right. Thank you for your comments. All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Diana, I'd like you to come back and maybe address some of the comments or questions that you've heard tonight. Can I ask her a couple of questions and maybe it'll fill in?
Absolutely.
Where we need to, where we need to go. Diana, if you could just speak to us on ownership of E-line, the exemptions that the ordinance has in place for individuals that do TNR, that type of work. And define free feeding for the group because I believe that, that that the local paper probably did a disservice by not laying out what the ordinance is really about in its, in its more complex nature.
So ownership, basically, Sutter Animal Services Authority and other agencies recognize that cats are sort of just by nature, free roaming. And because of that, in most jurisdictions, there is no ordinance against cats free roaming, going over the fence, up the tree, and the things that they do, staying within the city block. So currently in this jurisdiction, there is no requirement to have cats given rabies vaccinations and pet licenses, though that is the case in some jurisdictions. On the free feeding, basically, someone, I talked to somebody, I talked to a few people today, I'll tell you. I'll just say that. Then my phone was like, it was bad. And that's okay. I get, I get the passion, and I'm happy about the passion. But I did talk to someone who used the term bulk feeding. And I wish we'd use that. Doesn't that mean something different? Wow. Bulk, and I did use the expression last week, two weeks ago, taking a twenty or thirty pound bag of food, putting it on the back porch, slicing it open and walking away. That's not managing, effectively managing a colony. If you, if you put the food out, you're going to attract ferals, you're going to attract the neighborhood cat that lives across the street that likes that food better, right? It doesn't have to be feral. It's going to come, it's going to create issues. So maybe the wording, maybe we could have used a different word. Basically, what we mean is, if you're going to put out food, it should be for that particular animal or for those particular animals, enough, an adequate amount of food for the pets that you own, the ones that you are a steward of, not just the neighborhood and inviting. Did I hit that? Sorry. And I think there was a third thing that I missed. I'm sorry. Exemptions. So we, do we have the ordinance? Are we able to put the ordinance up? Yeah, do you have it in the? The set, well, basically, that's okay. So on the ordinance, it's a two-page document. Section D, it says, "This section shall not apply to persons who qualify for a trap, neuter, release program that the city establishes to reduce the feral wildcat populations." So that is how the ordinance is written. It doesn't say anything in there. And maybe we should put something in there about the public who, persons that are willing to do it on their own. We don't, we certainly don't want to stop you. We get that what you're doing is compassion-based, and we applaud that.
All right. Were there any other questions that you heard this evening that you'd like to comment on?
The, about the traps being available, the Sutter Animal Services has humane traps that we make available to the public at no charge. And we, that's something that they've done historically, and we have enough, I think, to offer to the public. And also, one of the speakers had mentioned, why can't we pick them up? The animal control staff, take the animals, get them fixed and bring them back. We just don't have the staffing for that. We, we have, the field services are three people to handle the entire Sutter County, which is six hundred and sixty-one square miles. And we are oftentimes on bite case, bite cases, straying dogs and so forth. There was an article in the paper a few months ago. At the end of twenty fourteen, we had handled nearly seven hundred animal bite cases with three people. So although we'd like to be able to pick up cats and take them and get them fixed and bring them back, there's just no way we can do that with staffing.
All right. Any other questions of council?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment. And I think a lot of the members from the audience are thinking that this is the first reading or this is the first time it's come to council. This is actually the second time. This is the second reading. It was approved by the council at the last meeting, and this is a second reading coming across. In all these years, you know, the ordinance that we put together, they're never the perfect ordinances. We try to get it right. Again, there's always time to change the language. You can use different wordings. A lot of times, an ordinance is coming through because we have nothing in place at all to have any kind of guidelines to go by it. One of the things that I've heard here tonight is we've got some wonderful groups, we've got some wonderful people in the community that have already doing what they're doing. And this isn't something that's stopping you or forbidding you to not to do what you're already doing. And I think this is the first step for us, trying to get some kind of an ordinance put into place. That doesn't mean that it can't be changed, it can't be modified, it can't be looked at again at another date. So I just want to let you guys all know that.
Thank you for your comments.
The chair. I think it would be, I'm glad to hear all the participation here this evening, the phone calls and comments that I got, received today. And I think as Buckland, Councilman Buckland had said that misinformation definitely was put out there. The ordinance was misunderstood, and I think that it is also, the wording definitely needs wordsmithing. I'd been using the terminology open feeding instead of free feeding because, as the speaker had said, public speaker had said, it's not free, it's very costly. But just to cut open a bag, that's why I said cut open a bag and put it out there. I just called it open feeding, which is, like I said, skunks, raccoons, possum, every cat in the neighborhood that, like they were saying, liked that food instead of what they're, they're getting. And so some of these things, we're glad that you came and made these comments on that. But what I'd like to see, though, is for the ones that are in the community that are doing the TNR methods to get, you know, bring your name, your phone number, contact with our animal control facility to let them know that you are actually doing it and where. So we actually can have a, they could put that on the map that these people are doing it in that area. And just to let them know that they're doing it and how many you're doing, give them something to work with a database now that we're having so that we know what's really going on in our community. There's no way we could have known unless you showed up tonight and made the calls you did. So thank you for doing this. But as fellow council members have said, there is nothing in place at all to do anything with. And while it definitely needs some help on this ordinance, springtime is here and people are feeding cats and they're being born, and there's nothing in place to at least start to address the situation. And it's not that we're forbidding you from feeding cats. We're just not gonna, we would prefer that you would not open feed or bulk feed feral cats that are breeding. And that's where the problem is, is right there. There's, being a rural community, you know, farming community, we will be inundated because we are a farming community. It's the way it is. And they don't, once they run out of rats and, at the beginning of the year, they kind of go down, and then mice, they'll be definitely visiting your homes. And so I've had that happen, so I understand it. So this is the first step, and I think the next full year or two of massaging this to become, I think, a good ordinance. It's kind of funny, all we're going to be talking about is cats, but as you can see, in this community, cats are an important thing to people. And so, yes, we do have to address cats as a council because that's what the people want us to talk about. So thank you for being here and giving us more information to work with and data. We need the data from what you're doing so we can improve what we're, what we are going to be doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Counsel, I have a question for you. The ordinance currently does not have any language that would exempt people that are doing, like was mentioned here in the, in the audience, it just talks about bulk feeding. Is there any language that we need to change or bring this back to do that, or can we amend that later? Or what would be the approach on that?
Oh, we could always come back and we can always amend an ordinance later. But as Diana said, she read right out of the ordinance, there is an exemption right now. Persons who, this section, this ordinance will not apply. I'm repeating what Diana just said, persons who qualify for a trap, neuter, release program that the city establishes to reduce the feral wildcat populations. So that presupposes that the city is going to establish a TNR program, which I understand is in the works right now. So there is language to exempt people who qualify for that program that we don't, that we, the city, I don't think currently have, but we are in the process of establishing that in the future. And there is a definition of free feeding. We use the term free feeding. We have a definition in the ordinance currently that's being proposed tonight. And I'll just read it for the audience and the council. Free feeding means not limiting the amount of food made available to an animal at a single feeding, resulting in excess food, which will result in creating inviting conditions for other animals, including wildlife. And then the prohibition in the ordinance states, "It shall be unlawful for any person to create a public nuisance by free feeding any wild animals, including any feral cats." We also have a definition of feral cats. So reading that all in conjunction, it's the free feeding, the excess feeding of feral cats that's prohibited by the ordinance that's in the language currently being proposed to the council.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, Diana. Go ahead. I mean, if you're going to ask questions, that's fine. Then I've got a statement. Go ahead with your statement. I'll follow it. You know, many of the concerns that were brought up and to reach one of the speakers, talking probably three quarters of the group was speaking about the need to address individuals that are dumping animals or not taking care of an animal. And I greatly believe that that is probably the paramount issue dealing with cats. With the exception that cats cannot be contained to a yard. If there was ever a neighborhood fight that has occurred my thirty-two years in police work, it dealt with cats. Second was motor homes. Don't ask me how those two tie together. But I think that what happens is people with all great intention by these cats, they bring them home, it's going to be a house cat. And they can't deal with the negative behavioral issues that a certain cat has. They don't make any type of positive reinforcement or any type of training with that cat, so they simply just turn it outside. And how do you get rid of a problem? How did the original owner get rid of the problem? It wasn't just turning it outside, they stopped feeding it. That cat stopped coming to their house. They stopped caring about that cat. Is that an issue? That's the paramount issue that we have to deal with. Enforcement of that would be next to impossible. These cats roam freely, so placing a cat in anyone's hands and being able to enforce that is by question probably impossible. I think that, that as we look through what we're going to do, how we're going to move through this process and with the TNR, and probably not just a boilerplate TNR, but one that is tailor-made for Sutter County, one that is tailor-made for Uba City, will work. It will take public commitment. We, as a government agency, cannot do what the public should be doing. There is no way to do that. These are your animals. I heard one lady from Bakersfield, how many cats, fifty-some cats that come to your house? Or that you've had? Oh, okay. But, but I know a lady that I helped send over to Diana had thirty-six cats in her home. It ruined her home. Only her bedroom was a human sanctuary. The rest of it was a cat sanctuary. And so she has struggled financially to come out of that. There are people that are committed. They're loving. They care about animals. I have two daughters that deeply care about animals. I know. I've had them in my house, not my, not my daughters, the animals. And, and most of these animals, if you domesticate them, they become very good pets, and I've heard that tonight. This is a step. We need to reduce the feral cat population. It's a health issue. And I think that we, as a community, just need to do a better job of providing for the care of our animals and our pets, not feral cats. And, and there is a definite distinction between what a feral cat and a feral house cat may be. That's the one you can invite in, and it's not going to take your, your finger off when it bites you. A feral cat is a fairly vicious animal. So I, I would really caution that we also look at those definitions as we move forward. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Diana, my question had to do with the enforcement. This is not something where we're just going to go out with a heavy hand and start fining people with, with huge fines, that it's more of an educational process to help the public help us.
Right. It's always been an educational process. But it didn't always work. It didn't usually work because there weren't, there weren't any teeth in it, so to speak. Basically, we would, we would get a call for service. I can guarantee you, when there is a problem, and there's thirty to fifty cats being fed, the reporting party knows who is feeding. They know, and they tell us who is feeding. And we, in the past, we would go to the house and we would educate them on why it's not a good idea, and then we would leave. And there was, there was no recourse. And so this way, we give them an opportunity, we educate them, we give them an opportunity to correct the issue with, you know, as the TNR program is in place and implemented, we give them some resources. Look, we know you meant well, but this isn't probably what you meant to do. So, no, we're not going to be going door knocking again. We have three animal control officers for the entire Sutter County, so.
Thank you, Diana.
I do have one, one more follow-up and kind of what I was addressing a little earlier, possibly. Since, since we do not have an official TNR program established, is there a way that we could get an acknowledgement that if these people come in and let you know what they're doing and how many, and kind of give you a file of what they're doing? That that could become the TNR program that qualifies for now?
Yes.
And then that would take care of that, and then you can establish one that would include that later, a more complete one. And all the concerns that everybody has wouldn't have to deal, wouldn't have a problem with.
Exactly.
Not qualifying and being exempt.
Exactly. It is, it's going, in order for this to work, it has to be a partnership. So absolutely, if, I'm sure I didn't bring enough business cards. Nope, look at that. But is there a way to put my information up on the, okay? Yeah. Here we go. Not really, but okay. Well. Okay, so here we go. Anybody want it? I'll give you my.
Ends of paper out.
I'm going to give you my boss's number. Here we go. Sorry, sir. It's obviously five three oh eight two two seven three seven. Sorry, sir. It's obviously five three oh eight two two seven three seven five. My name is Diana Barrett, B A R R E T T. And for those of you that prefer email, it's initial D, Barrett, B A R R E T T, at ubacity.net. And you can just send me an email if you want to or give me a call. Let me know what your colony is like, what you're working on, and I already see a spreadsheet being formulated right now in my head. And we'll put something together and we'll be working on this as um, as a partnership. And perhaps there'll be a, a T N R coalition. It'll be a brand new thing. So we have, we have to do something. Again, this was the first step.
Thank you, Diana. Go ahead.
Um, I just want to make a comment. Um, I want to applaud those of you who are helping with um, you know, having it managed feeding and the T N R, taking, taking the cats, taking care of them. At the same time, I also want to make sure that the neighbors who don't want the cats in their yards are also being taken care of. So we have to find a fine line here. So I think the ordinance here will be a start for all of us to work together on both sides. Um, for those of you who are doing a well job in taking care of them, I want to assu- assure that the ordinance is indicating that you will not be fined um, when you are doing the proper thing. And that way, hopefully, your neighbors who do not want the cats there, help them out as well. So work as a partnership in your neighborhood so that we, as a community, can work together to do this. This is a starting point and we have a lot of work to do to get and fine tune this. But at least we're here in the same room and let's talk about it and let's get the process going. So I appreciate everybody coming and um, putting in your comments. It helps put the process together.
Thank you. I'd just like to kind of wrap the comments up here. One common thread that I heard through most of the speakers tonight was that you're the responsible people here that are doing the right thing, that are taking that extra effort and spending your own money to do the uh, spaying and neutering of these uh, feral cats uh, in addition to to feeding them. And as Diana talked about, the stewardship of of those cats. And so I want to thank you, first of all, you guys are not the problem. The problem is the people that are just bulk feeding and opening those bags and doing nothing else other than just throwing food out there. And that's what this ordinance really is addressing, is that. And so um, I applaud you and thank you for what you are doing. And contact Diana because we can put together a coalition to start working together, the community and the animal services, to be able to come up with a solution so that people like Tommy don't have the problems of cats overrunning his property uncontrolled. And that's really what this is about, is trying to have a workable solution for for everyone. So thank you. And with that, I'd like to bring it back to the council for action.
Move to staff's recommendation. Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you all for your comments tonight.